Okay, we are back in session and we are starting unfinished business. The first of which is Pontagorda Isles Bird Section Cut Through Permitting Status Update.
Good morning. My name is Hans Wilson for the record and I'm here to talk to you briefly, very briefly, about the permitting exercise that we're undergoing at this moment. We've been making good progress with the Department of Environmental Protection. We have completed application with that organization. The DEP issued a notice of intent, which means that they're in a position to issue the permit. We published the notice of intent in the local paper and have closed out the 21-day comment period. That after date of the publication, Gary Dishar was able to track down for us so we can get it back to the DEP. And I would say probably in less than 30 days, we'll have our DEP permit issued. That's the good news. Now the bad news. The Army Corps of Engineers has been really dragging their feet badly. Back in November of last year, in order to try and expedite the review of the project, I actually went through and completed all the work that the normal project manager for the Corps of Engineers does. That includes drafting the public notice that they do. We took the presentation that we had prepared on the alternatives, the six alternatives, and I actually took that and converted that into an alternatives analysis that I knew the Corps would ask for, processed the paperwork that they normally prepare in-house in an attempt to try and expedite the project. It's been sitting on the project manager's desk at the Corps of Engineers now for close to six months. I've appealed to the section chief up in Jacksonville. What can we do to move this forward? I've already spoken with both Gary Dishar and Mark Gering on what we have to do politically if necessary. And at this point, I was promised that they were, the project manager for the Corps was going to get this project to public notice and start working on it next Tuesday. So next Tuesday is our deadline. If that doesn't happen, then we have to go political through someone in Congress to champion our project and get the Corps to move out on it. The problem with the Corps of Engineers is that I can't start coordinating with National Fishery Service and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service on sawfish issues, manatee issues, until I go to public notice. So it's delaying us. We've probably, their normal processing is generally three months before we can get to public notice. So I've got at least a three to four month delay right now because of their workload, lack of staffing, lack of funding. I can make the, I can give you a list of the excuses that I get from them. But that's where we are on federal permitting. And I think the fact that we've got the state permitting ready to be issued is positive. And that will help us in the federal because now when they go to public notice, they can include the state permit with it.
How long is the public notice period for that?
It's a 30-day comment period, but the, because of potential impacts on the Endangered Species Act, the National Fishery Service doesn't have a timeframe in which they have to reply to a coordination request under Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, on the other hand, does have 135-day timeframe that they have to respond. I don't anticipate any issues on manatees with the project. But with the National Fishery Service, clearly there'll be some questions regarding small to sawfish, and we will just do our best to try and move that through as quickly as we can. I did listen to some of the comments, and there was one comment that came up regarding the Smugglers Cut, and I thought I would just kind of elaborate on that a little bit for counsel. In talking with the regulatory folks, as well as the environmental folks that look at the project, specifically coastal and aquatic managed area staff, the, we've identified a couple of things about the Smugglers Cut that are problematic, both from the standpoint of the environment as well as navigation. We've had some anecdotal information relate to us about potential collisions in Smugglers Cut with people running through at plaining speed while somebody else is anchored in fishing. We've observed some prop scarring at the bottom. It's very shallow, and it, that prop scarring and that turbidity created is chronic. And in discussions with the agencies, there seemed to be an interest in regulating the use of that by limiting the available width for access or by posting it for non-motorized vessels. A limitation on the use of that area has to go before the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and that actually has to go before their Board for Approval if we do limit it to, say, for example, non-motorized vessels or restrict the access to it. However, there was a general consensus that that was in the public interest because the boaters that are using it now as the only way of accessing Alligator Creek would now have a new channel and would not have that need to go through there. It was an opportune location to create a non-motorized paddlecraft canoe kayak, you know, slow-speed area. If anything, as a minimum, if we don't regulate the size of vessels that can access it, I think the recommendation is going to be that at least we can get authority from the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to post it as slow-speed only, so that we eliminate potential navigational conflicts and safety issues.
Is it natural, or, I mean, where did it come from?
It's a natural log body that is just connected to the perimeter of canal.
And it just so happens it gets deep enough that they can make it through there?
Barely. Depends on tide.
Okay.
And clearly, if you're, again, if you're originating from that area and you go out on high tide and you're clear, but you have a great day fishing and you don't pay attention to your tides, and you come back on a low tide, if given the choice of trimming up your engine or maybe doing some prop dredging to get back into where my dock is versus going all the way up to Pont's inlet, well, I know what I would do. So, um, that's an issue.
Questions?
Yes, since this is in my district, I've heard from dozens and dozens and dozens of people that live back in the Byrd area and others. And I would like to see that we do anything and everything possible to keep the Smugglers Cut open. That's been one bone of contention with some of the documentation that has been published. I would like to ask that you do that as, for my personal request for the people that I represent.
I can, I can request that. Again, you know, we're, we're running this regulatory maze with a number of state and federal agencies that look at the project, and everybody wants their piece of the action, so to speak, or their, you know, whatever it is that you want to call it. But that's part of what sometimes you have to give up to get. And so that's that balancing act that we're trying to accomplish to make everybody happy, and that's a challenge.
I understand that. But I, what I do know is that a lot of people use that more as, let's say, a sightseeing expedition for their company from out of town and for people that are, that want to quit out to go fishing, and they don't want to have to go all the way out to the new channel where it's going to be.
Well, actually, when the new channel is constructed, it'll be shorter to get out via the new channel than it will be going through Smugglers Cut. That's the first thing.
The fishermen don't want that.
I, I understand the interest in fishing that and sightseeing that area. I think that as a minimum, at least posting it as a slow speed for safety issues makes sense.
That would make sense to me.
And then there may be some, maybe draft limitation or something like that, but I will, I will, I will take that into counsel.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
What other mitigation has been talked about?
Amazingly enough, we were able to get through the public interest requirement, and the city will be contributing, I think it's $3,500, towards a seagrass study of the Charlotte Harbor complex, which I thought that was extraordinarily low cost to meet the public interest test for the project. Although personally, I think the channel itself is clearly in the public interest. But again, it's that balancing act that we have to meet.
Any other questions?
No, I just, the only thing I could say is that we have precedent in the community of Inverness Island where we've had areas where we've had to give up something to get. So it's not uncommon in trying to navigate the maze that we have to do those things. So, but I do understand Lynn's request of, from a slow-speed standpoint, if it's possible, because we can even post slow speed, but I know just from the end of canals, we can say slow speed, but that doesn't necessarily...
Yeah, and I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. I think the main concern is that there are a lot of folks that do like to go through, I used to call it the African Queen Safari Trip, because it's like, you know, you're bobbing and weaving under the mangroves and hanging over the actual cut, and as you're driving through there, you're waiting for a snake or an alligator to fall over your back or something. And it's kind of neat to go back there if you have a very shallow draft boat, but I just would hate to see that go away if there's any possible way to keep that accessible for the boaters that like to use it. That's all.
Okay.
Thanks.
Very quick, let me just for my own edification. The pilings that you're talking about, who owns the bottoms of the, where the pilings may go? That would be sovereign state lands. Okay, thanks. The pilings on the Alligator Creek part would be state lands, the pilings on the, the canal connection is probably Pontagorda Isles. So there's more than one set of pilings? Yes, there's a set that where the channel exits from the Pontagorda Isles Canal System, and then there's a set where it enters into Alligator Creek if you're exiting the PGI system.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Hi.
You ready?
Yes.
For the record, Dave Gury, Heather Ensenosa from Neighbors Giblin Nickerson is a law firm that has reviewed our ordinances, and she is going to be giving a methodology for the apportionment of the, the cut through that Hans just referred to. She's here to answer questions. She has done the due diligence, and then she will be the one that would defend it if there was any challenges. Okay, thank you. Heather?
Good morning. Heather Ensenosa, I'm with the Law Firm of Neighbors Giblin Nickerson. I'm a partner out of the Tallahassee office. We are a statewide law firm, and we represent only local governments, counties and cities and some special districts. And we have a particular emphasis on revenue, and so we've worked on literally hundreds of special assessment projects. Real briefly today, I'm going to talk about some of the legal requirements, because I am a lawyer and that feels obligatory for me to say it, but I'll make it quick. Your harbor access project, which you're all well aware about, and I'll just touch on that briefly. The benefit area, which was originally defined by Hans, who is also here, with some modifications that I've recommended. Special benefit and then the recommended apportionment methodology in the event that you finally get through your permitting and you're ready to look at a specialized revenue source to fund this project. Special assessments, you're all aware of this, are charged as assessed against a property of some particular locality because that property derives a special benefit from the expenditure of the money. These are not new revenue sources. They have been around since the early 1900s. Some of the earliest special assessments on the books are per-front-foot assessments for roads and streets and sidewalks and things like that. This is a variation on that. In order to be a legal special assessment in Florida and to avoid being classified as an unconstitutional tax, there is a two-part test that has been established by Florida case law. The first is it must provide a special benefit to property, and I will focus on that a little bit more later in this presentation. And the second is that it has to be fairly and reasonably apportioned among all benefited properties so that no one property is paying more than its proportionate fair share. These are some examples of special benefit that, from Florida case law. There is not a statute sitting out there that tells you, in order to have a legal special assessment, this is what you have to have, and these are what the things you can fund with it. Instead, in Florida, our jurisprudence on special assessments has been driven by case law. This is not, therefore, an exhaustive list. These are just the things that have been challenged and the courts have upheld. Here are some things that have been challenged and the courts have struck. None of these things are specifically on point. There is not any published case law that I am aware of specifically on canals or canal dredging. However, there are numerous canal and canal dredging programs that are funded by special assessments around the state. It just merely means they've not been specifically litigated up to a published decision from any of our district or our supreme courts. The second prong of the special benefit test, or the special assessment test, is not as specific as the special benefit. Instead, you have to find a logically and factually driven method to develop and spread the costs among the benefit of properties. Really, what I tell people usually is think about what you're doing and the way you want to spread it is it makes sense in terms of what you're providing. For example, if you were doing a assessment to fund fire services, you wouldn't necessarily want to use front footage because it has absolutely nothing to do with how you're providing fire services. So it's really a gut check and does this meet the common sense test in terms of how we want to provide it. It's important to note on this slide here, on Slide 7, that once you get to the implementation steps of this, your resolutions are going to be loaded with legislative determinations. They're going to spell out in detail, these are our assumptions as to special benefit, this is why we decided to apportion the costs this way, these are any of the property-specific changes we may have considered and why we did those. The reason for that is because if this program is challenged and it does go to court, any of your legislative determinations are going to be deferred to by that court, so long as they are not completely arbitrary and lack any sort of fundamental basis, the court's going to look at those, and they're not going to second guess you because that is not their Methods of apportionment. There are as many methods of apportionment as there are people that could come up with them. There is not one mathematically precise way to apportion any project, and mathematical precision is not required. You could have reasonable people saying, we should apportion this project this way, and we, you could have somebody on the other side, either of which could be acceptable. So we're not looking for the one right answer, we're looking for a reasonable answer. Down to your specific project. What we are talking about here is a, your harbor access to provide an additional navigational access canal that's going to connect Pontagorda Isles to Charlotte Harbor. The alternative that has been selected and is currently in permitting, as you just heard Hans talk about, is the Alternative 6 Bird Cut East. This is about a 1,500-foot length canal, 60 feet wide, going to connect through Alligator Creek. Estimated project cost at the time when this report was done was about 1.5 million. If you read to the back of the report, obviously, those costs need to be re-upped and re-examined, and there's some additional costs that would have to get added to the top of that before you went forward with a special assessment. So that's just for, you know, all fairness and transparency, that is purely a construction cost only at point in time, a couple of years back at least. The benefit area, the benefit area was originally recommended by Hans in his report, I think it was done in January of 2016. And the assumption in that report, and I don't have any reason not to doubt that, to doubt that assumption, is that the property owners within Pontagorda Isles would use the closest access point in order to enter and exit from Charlotte Harbor. Based upon that assumption, I did go through the benefit area and make some recommendations to refine it. Specifically, there were some properties within that benefit area that were landlocked and were not on the canal. Just a few, but we recommended that those get pulled out because we're really talking about, only canal abutting properties should be included. Second, all developed or developable properties, and I have a really hard time saying that word, so I'm glad I got that out, that could be improved with, you know, a dock, a boat lift, or another water access unit should be included. In the original drawing of the benefit area, which was done, just so you know, based upon the halfway point between the Pont's inlet and where this new canal access would be, and then including all properties that were on the new Alligator Creek side of that halfway point, there were some properties that were omitted because they were government-owned, and I would recommend including those properties if they can have water access units on them so that they are not, we're not spreading the costs to privately owned properties only within that area. Additionally, when I looked at the maps and started going through this, there were some properties that were not included in the benefit area, and I understand why, and it's because they were outside of the city limits. But there is a string of 20, 21 properties along River Bay Drive, I think it is, that are just outside of the city limits, so they're in an unincorporated Charlotte County. And they are definitely going to be benefited from this project. And so going forward, I think it would be useful to open up a dialogue with Charlotte County to find out how those properties can be included so that they can pay their fair share as well. The special benefit assumptions, these were also from Hans's report. Improved navigational access that's going to provide a decreased travel time to Charlotte Harbor. A second additional access point, better boating experience, water quality improvements, and improved property values. From a, from a legal standpoint, though, there are, some of these are more benefits to people than to property. And so what we focused on in the report are the ones that I see as being a potential benefit to property. And that is the improved navigational access, the water quality improvements, and the improved property values. These are really the, the crux of a special assessment and the benefit to property as opposed to just a general benefit to boaters. Based upon all of that, the apportionment methodology that we recommended for this one-time capital project is different than your existing maintenance methodology because they are actually different, completely different programs. Maintenance, you're maintaining the length and width of all canals and your cuts. This is a one-time capital project, and I think that that demands a different treatment here. So what we had recommended was, again, all developed and developable, did I see? I cursed myself, developable properties, abutting the canal within the benefit areas. Under your current regulations, which are included in Chapter 6 of your code, if they would be allowed, at least one dock or boat lift or other water access units, we would recommend that the project cost here be apportioned among those properties based upon the maximum number of water access units that they could have. A water access unit, and this is a definition that has been used for other similar type projects in other jurisdictions, there are docks, landings, ramps, lifts, bays, lifts, wharves, or any other structure basically that's going to be for receiving boats and other water crafts that would be allowed under your existing regulations. This would become your standard unit for the assessment calculation, and it serves as a proxy for estimating the special benefit that would be provided to each property, not each person. The assignment of these water access units would be done in accordance with Chapter 6 of your code, specifically 66C and 66J. It would be, each property would be assigned the maximum number of existing or permitted, whichever is greater. Now, you do have some condos in there, which makes it a little bit different because each condo is going to be a tax parcel, but they're going to have condo common area and common, probably, water access units. And so for condominiums, you need to do a little bit of variation on that in order to comply with state law because there actually is a statute on this point. They would be, all of the water access units for the entire condo complex would be amassed and then allocated equally among the tax parcels. Your assessments, then, would include your project costs, whatever your final construction cost is, your financing costs, any other costs that under standard accounting, accounting would be included within this project. That could include administration. You also would have collection costs. The property praiser and the tax collector are allowed to recoup their, their collection costs and those efforts and actual costs. And then a statutory discount amount. The statutory discount refers to the state statutory discounts that are, for any property owner who pays their taxes in either November, December, or January or February, and that's on a sliding scale. The reason that this amount is included on top is because if everyone then paid in November, you would pay your debt service. The assessments would be payable over a term of years. Generally, that's not to exceed the useful life of the project, and that's going to be a probably, if you decide to finance this with a bank loan, that's going to be a bank termination. They're not going to want to see it spread out any longer than that. The project cost, once you get closer and get further through your permitting, would need to be updated, and then these other costs would need to be added. We've already heard about your permits. And then the project cost would be, your total cost would be divided by the number of water access units that are ultimately determined to be within the benefit area, and that gets you to a cost for water access unit. You would be imposing an assessment for an initial term of years. At the beginning, you can allow people the opportunity to prepay and thereby avoid certain annual costs or even financing costs. So there's a lot of details that you will be making decisions on as you go forward. This is a high-level, at this point, recommendation on your apportionment methodology. With that, if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Okay, I have questions on the water access units, so what I'm getting from what you're saying is that you would look at what's permitted, so would it be permanent structures because there's floating docks? I mean, there's different things that may not be so permanent but may be permitted?
It's allowable or permitted because there are, there is a large area, it's about 105 acres, that is not developed at this time, but they do have federal permitting on a certain number of water access units. So that's where the permitting comment comes in.
Okay.
For everyone else, you have a very detailed and well-done ordinance that outlines for each particular property what they could have as a, as a maximum number of water access units, which is in Chapter 6 of your code. And for everyone else, those are the standards that you would have.
Okay. Jaan?
I had, I guess, a question concerning true operating of the right parameters. I guess, my assumption is we have two issues. One, paying for this, that's one side. Two, is that we need to make sure that we distinguish between a tax and a fee, and a tax being, let's say, the non-exchange revenue, which would, basically, it's, it's, it's indirect benefit or benefit to people. And a fee being exchange revenue where UX is indirectly which benefits property, and so that's the game that we have to operate with.
Yes, and you have to, there's, there's case law requirements in order to have a valid assessment of the, a tax, as you said, is just everyone pays it for the benefit of living in a civilized society. The special benefit requirement does not exist for taxes.
Just so that I'm a little bit clear, in a lot of these areas, a number of the undeveloped lots are zoned for multifamily, but there's been a trend for some people buying these lots and having them rezoned and cleaned up, one structure, one hub, for example. And the multifamily might have vertical docks, and there might be six there, but the single structure would only have one. They buy this after the assessment. Is there, is it going to be based on the way the lot is zoned at this, at the point of assessment? And if that person buys that lot, they're just going to pay a larger assessment because of the lot they bought, you probably, you probably put up most probably?
Yes, it's going to be based upon the highest and best use right now.
So basically, once it's levy, that's?
That's it. Okay.
Nancy?
Yes, I have several questions. With regard to the water access unit definition, I find it a little bit vague because you have a lot of properties, first of First of all, let me, let me start off by saying, I support this project, and I don't want anyone to ever think that I don't. And I want it to happen in my lifetime. And thanks to Hans, it's going in that direction, we hope. But I do have a lot of issues with the way this is being done. And I, since we do have time to adjust our thinking and possibly move forward in a different method than we currently have outlined, I'd like to just throw a couple of things out there. Regarding the water access units, if I have a tip lot that has 175 feet of waterfront, and I have a dock that wraps the entire way around that property, how many water access units am I going to be charged?
We haven't done any assignments of water access units yet, but it's basically, your code outlines in pretty good detail what each property would be allowed based upon the, you know, their width and their angles, there's 45-degree angle stuff. So it's the maximum amount they would be allowed under the code, not what they actually have.
Can anybody answer my question from staff? I'm curious, because this is very important to the overall definition of what this project entails.
And that assignment would be done before you adopted your initial assessment resolution. Your initial assessment resolution, which would come at some time in the future, would be, you know, incorporating the methodology, refining the definition, you will have done all of the work to determine the universe of water access units, the price per water access unit is included in there, and then before the project is finally approved, every single effective property owner gets a first-class mail notice that tells them exactly what they're being, how many water access units are on their property, and what they're proposed to be charged. So those details are fleshed out in an extraordinary amount of detail before implementation.
I have a problem with that. I mean, I would like a more clearly defined definition of that. I've had a lot of people in my district ask me this question, because we're the most directly involved in this whole thing, and we're the people that are going to be assessed. If I have, again, if I have a property that has 170 feet of waterfront, I may have two or three individual docks that spread around the perimeter of that footage, or I may have a whole wraparound dock, or I may just have one dock, but I have 170 feet on the water. So I would like a definition of how many water access units that equates to. Secondly, I have several hundred condos in my district, and all of those condos pretty much all have boats. And those are the boats that go by my house every day. I'm on the river canal in the bird section, and those are the boats that go by my house every day, and the marine patrol officers can back me up. Those are the people that get pulled over for speeding all the time. It's not the people that own the single-family residences. There are hundreds and hundreds of boats at those condos, and they're being assessed differently than the single-family homes. I have a problem with that. I don't, I don't agree with the fact that these water access units really do not fairly depict what's really in that area. And so therefore, I will say that I do not agree with the assessment district. I think that, as was mentioned earlier in the public comments, there needs to be a better way to do this, and there needs to be a more generic way to do this, so that it is, we are a waterfront community, and maybe everyone in DGI does need to be assessed this amount of money, whether it's even $150, $200 per property. I think that makes much more sense. And I'm relaying comments that have been given to me by the people that I represent, so I want to be very thorough in getting the answers to these questions before I approve anything. That's my position.
On the condo issue, regardless of the methodology that you use, there is a state law that dictates that you're going to be taking the total for the entire complex and dividing it by the tax parcels. You're not going to be able to exceed that. But if they have, if everyone truly has a boat, and there's that many water access units there, then everyone would probably be roughly the same as a single-family house. And I don't know the specifics there, because units haven't been assigned yet, because that is going to be a little bit of a heavy lift, and before staff takes that step, you know, the methodology at a higher level should be discussed, so that we're not spinning a lot of wheels.
Well, we do have a lot of finger docks at the condos, and so there are side-by-side boats on this, on one dock, but you're using a dock as one of your defining terms, as a water access unit term. So that's why I want, I want these questions answered.
Well, I think a finger dock, if there are five finger docks, I would, and they're allowed under your code, I would expect that that would be five.
But there's 10 boats.
Okay, I mean, these are all issues, I mean, this is a high-level term. You know, what we mean by a dock, it's going to be refined under your code and under those definitions. If there are 10 tie-ups, then there's probably going to be 10. But I mean, I was, I didn't know if finger dock had two sides, sorry, I'm not a voter.
Maybe I can help with this a little bit in response to your request.
The development code for the site, for the community there, basically sets a working footprint for your waterfront, and in that working footprint, you can fit a certain number of slips. So, for example, in a condominium, if you've got 170 linear feet, we would look at it, what the code would allow, without any variances or deviations, basically saying, okay, how many boats can I physically put in this footprint per the limitations defined by the code, the 45-degree angle, the extension of the water body, that type of thing? And that will set how many boats you could actually place along that waterfront. Now, in a situation where you may have a condominium, you may have a 200-unit condominium, but you may only get 10 slips because of the available working space you have in front. So what'll end up happening is that those 10 slips will be a portion, their, their cost would be apportioned over the 200 units. So you're basically paying one-tenth of the cost per water access unit, because you only got 10 slips. So there is going to be a way to say definitively, according to the code, and how many upland units exist, or how many upland units are allowed by zoning, how many water access units would enter to the property. Does that help?
No. And it wouldn't be the maximum. It would be the maximum. So if there's five docks, but there's 10 slips, when you're looking at this, you would go to the maximum number.
Yes. And one thing that people get confused a lot of times is when people talk about, oh, I have a dock, what they're really seeing is, oh, I have a boat slip. And so we're looking specifically at boat slips. How many boat slips can we fit along that piece of property with a single-family, multifamily condominium, whatever that designated use is? How many can we physically fit, according to what the code allows? Again, without any variances or deviations, that's the maximum. So if the, if the property owner, for example, that Mr. Wang was talking about, comes in and he's got a multifamily piece of property that allows 10 slips, but they're going to basically downzone it to only put in two for two, for a single-family residence, there's still 10 slips that would run with that property that could be the maximum permissible with the city for that particular site, and that's what that assessment would be based on.
Yeah, I think it would have been helpful in this discussion, and then the material that we had, there could have been a couple of examples put forward, because I, when I was reading through, I was trying to make something a little bit more concrete in my mind. So I was trying to wrestle with that, and I realized that the danger in that is then people start to extrapolate what's going to be their situation, when in fact, that might not be the case at all. But at least I was trying to, in my understanding and comprehending what was being communicated, that, where I was trying to go with this.
We're, we're a little bit early to do that. Again, this is the big picture that Heather's talking about, and she's correct in the term that, or, well, I don't think it was her, somebody mentioned that there's a heavy lift associated with developing this, and that is in fact the case, because you're going to be looking at each property individually almost, and trying to come up with, okay, how many slips can I fit there? That's a lot of property, it's almost 2,500 properties that you're going to be going through, and coming up with this assessment methodology to define how many slips you can fit on that piece of property. And then, that, once that's set, then each property owner, or if I'm wrong, each property owner at some point will look at that and go, oh, yeah, that's fine, or no, I object to that. Or, or, we have a variance, it was granted for us to have 20 slips, where the code only allowed 10. We're not aware of that variance, but it's authorized, you know, so.
Got it. Yeah, I think that the determining the benefit area is important. It's an important discussion, and there is precedent of our residents in Burt's or Isles, for example, determining the projects that we need, that we are assessing ourselves. And it's certainly as we are a boating community, but we are paying for this ourselves, and so I think that that's an important thing. It's, yes, it is a boating area, and I know that the discussion of, well, but we have a dock park, and we have this, and other amenities throughout the city, we all can choose to have a dock. I don't have one, but we can choose to have one. But not everybody has a boat that's going to use the Alligator Creek Cut through, so I don't feel that the discussion of us using everyone, people from Burt's or Meadows and Seminole Lakes contributing to pay for the access.
And even in PGI, in my neighborhood, I'm, you know, Bass Inlet, I'm restricted by the bridge. So even to get into Ponce or your, you know, an additional bird cut, I would have to go out and come all the way back in. There's no physical way to even get over here. Gary?
Okay, I'm going to pause.
It's happened before.
It's happened before. Okay, so, as I think about this, this benefit area that we're talking about, and I live probably as far away as, as away as you can get from the bird cut, but I actually see that the bird cut's going to give me a benefit. First of all, it is a boating community. Second of all, I used to, when I had a deck boat, I would come and take my visitors, I'd come into Ponse Park, work my way all through the canals, show off all, come out over by my house, and come back in. So that loop is available. And that, and it was pointed out that in bad weather, that could be an alternate route for a fisherman to take, lives next door to me, if he gets stuck out over by Alligator Creek, he has the ability to have that access. My boat is too large to get under some of those bridges now, the one that I have, but I still take my guests frequently down Ponse. I go in, look at the mandrills and so forth, and then when I finally get tired, I get a turning basin. Exactly. The cut would give me the ability to take my guests and my family on a nice, long, leisurely tour, and hopefully we don't wind up being Billings Island, but, but that, that potential is there. As far as the benefit of the property, I think what's ever good for boating is good for the boating part of the community. We have a dock park, we're, you know, that's one of our, our holy grounds of this, but it's not easily accessible to everybody in town. But it's accessible to everybody in town, and everybody contributes to that, through our taxes. We're going through drainage programs, and, you know, I thought, I think everybody should take care of their own property, but we're not going to do that, we're going to do that collectively, but that's going to, I live on a, on a, on a block that, when we have a delusion, my block is drained within a couple of hours, not three days, which is the, the criteria. Other communities aren't as, have, have that same benefit of that great drainage, and we have collectively as a body made a commitment to improve that citywide. So there's a part of me that says that really, at least when it comes to PG, PGI, that really we're all benefiting from this cut, and we should, you know, I should open my pocket up a little bit for it. So I just muddied up the storms, but that's the way I feel at the moment.
Go ahead.
This is good conversation. I was nervous about this. We, a couple of years ago, when we started this process, revisiting this process at the Ios Yacht Club, when the Voters Alliance presented the proposal, the room was, that's like the Ios Yacht Club was over. And then we had our meetings in the event center, and we have done a yeoman's job getting this project moving to this point. Remember how dormant this project has been over the years? We were on a, on a very solid course, and we've done well in this city over the years, when we have made a decision, stuck with it, and finished it. That doesn't mean we can't discuss it again, because we are. I, I'm getting nervous that what was presented here was a recommended methodology. It's just the first foray into it, but it is based on a specific area paying for a specific improvement. If we are going to veer from that, then we need to know that.
Well, it's like Erica said, we have to be sure ourselves, and we understand the difference between taxes and fees, because sometimes the dock park is taxed because it's indirect. This, this is a direct benefit, and so therefore, it's an assessment. But now, the issue would be, what's the benefit area? That's ultimately the way it's determined. From that, we then divide the benefit area according to number of units, but we can't mess that up and confuse taxes and fees, but then we get into a legal issue as well.
I'd agree with that. Nancy?
I'm consistent with our previous decision. The only question that I might, comes up in my mind is, I know Hans did a, a good job of the 50% this way versus going north versus going south. Is, is there any in-between? Is there any, for the southern, whole southern portion of, of the PGI canal system, is there any in-between where someone went and said, yes, I'm going to go this way, or, and that may be something we don't need to decide today, but I just...
There is definitely an in-between. There's a, there's a piece of property there, that that property owner will be smack dab in the middle, has to make a decision whether to go south or north. Now, what can be done is you can always pro-rata on some sliding scale, based on your proximity to the waterway and to the, to the channel, but that gets even more complicated.
Yeah, it does. Just a, just a question.
I mean, it's definitely drawing a line.
Yes.
There's no, that's what it is, it's drawing a line.
I just, I'm not going to be a tag in this team, whichever way we go, so I'm just saying I was just muddying up the storms, but the way I feel, that maybe it is a more broader benefit area. I can see a benefit, even though I'm, you know, and granted, it's not going to be the same benefit, but I'm not asking for a pro-rata. Because the reality is, is that this community collectively does things that benefit me probably disproportionately from other people, et cetera. So, you know, so that we're, we're a community as a whole, and I'm just saying that that's the way I'm kind of viewing this right now, because we are a boating community.
So on the map that you have attached to your, your report, the Akia's Dock Parcel is not, correct? That's your map? Okay. Oh, right there, okay, okay. So the one that's up in the top left corner is landlocked, that's why it's cut out, that one piece? Yes, okay. Oh, yeah, that's the nature park, okay, I got that. But that would, what were the government parcels? Would that be that, the nature park?
Yeah, there's a fire department parcel there.
Is that the one you were talking about that should be included?
No, they're not. They appear to be on the water. If they're not, then we would remove them, like for mine, we would use them like that.
Yes, can you put the map, can somebody get the map up there? Thank you. It's in the agenda package, too, on the report. Yes, the last page of her, very last, page 181.
The reason why I recommended that we have an expert in this type of exercise assist us is, I didn't want to touch this with a tentacle. And so, the question that will come up, if and when I have to define the correctness of the methodology, falls on this particular element where you indicated... of the methodology falls on this particular element where you indicated at the outset that in order to be defensible, the, the costs have to be proportioned among all benefited properties. And so, would you be able to testify in a challenge that any of the properties that are in the yellow, as shown on that map, are not benefiting?
I'm not, I'm not testifying on anything. The, the benefit area was established by Hans and presented to the city. We recommended some changes to it, to include additional properties, but that, you know, in, I analyzed his assumptions, and I did not have any reason to dispute his assumptions.
Okay, well, you're the expert with respect to special assessments.
Yes.
And Hans, you know, he, he's not an expert on special assessments. So he made, you know, he made a determination probably based on direction from, say, council. But I, the question is going to be raised, if we go, as we go forward, is, is this separation, as shown on this map, going to be able to withstand a challenge? If the question becomes, are the properties that are outside of what's been described as the bird area also benefiting?
And some of the benefits that you were discussing were more benefits to people as opposed to property. I didn't see any reason to, that I would disagree with the assumption that was made on travel distance and the assumption that the, a property, or a boat leaving a property within, within this area would go to the closest point. Additionally, we did recommend that you do engage an appraiser to opine on the improved or preserved property values as a result of this additional improvement. And I do think from the water quality standpoint, that there is definitely a tie to physical proximity when you get additional tidal flows, as far as increasing the water quality of the bowels. And so, I mean, I can't, I, I'm a lawyer, I am not an engineer, so I'm not the person to opine specifically on the benefit area. Our job was to troubleshoot and determine and try to refine it if needed.
Being the, um, I guess major components is benefited property, property appraiser aspect.
I think that's a, yeah, that maybe is the next piece that we need, an, an appraiser in the property.
And it's either an appraiser or an economist, but there is def, I mean, that, that was recommended in the report, you know, that is, that's outside of my wheelhouse, but it is something that I recommend to you all to sort of shore up that benefit aspect.
If I can interpret what you said, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is that the properties within the bird area are being appropriately assessed or, or, you know, assessed based on all of the properties within the bird area are more or less equally benefited, so there's no need to differentiate between any of the properties within the bird area, other than how many bulk slips they might possibly have. And scope, your project did not include an assessment as to whether or not anybody outside the district was benefited, and that the district should be relocated.
No, we looked at the benefit area, we made some recommendations to exclude some properties and to include some properties. But as far as the assumptions about travel distancing and who would use, primarily use this new cut, that is not something that we're equipped to do, or we were tasked to do, because we're a law firm.
And Hans, you may have to answer this question. The smugglers' cut, is that outside of the assessment area?
Yes.
So.
It's on state-owned lands, so.
No, I'm, I'm talking about in terms of assess, the use of that, I mean, it's outside of, of this assessment area, so, so.
No, the, the people in this assessment area are typically using smugglers' cut, depending on your vessel size.
What about the people outside of the?
I wouldn't be surprised if somebody on a windy day decided they wanted to fish Alligator Creek and, and came down the perimeter canal and went through smugglers' cut and fished Alligator Creek, because it was windy out in the north.
I'm asking this question in order to maybe allow us to have an argument with the state when we want to, instead of putting the pilings in, to put a sign that, you know, says slow speed. If we closed off smugglers' cut to those people in, outside of the bird area, would that then cause greater impacts within the bird area? And therefore throw out of whack our, our impact assessment?
Can you, can you restate that? I wasn't following that.
If, if the people from the PGI section, voters from the PGI section outside of the benefit area can no longer access smugglers' cut because we put piles in, would they be more inclined then to come and use the new cut, which would, which would then create greater benefits to people outside of the district?
Well, I think you have to get back to what Heather was talking about in terms of the goal versus the property and navigational assessment. If you're coming from outside of the proposed benefit area, because you're going down to Alligator Creek to go upstream to the restaurant that's up there, and your boat has a shallow enough draft that you can get through smugglers' cut, and the new channel is created, you've basically allowed for a greater percentage of boaters, because of no limitation necessarily on draft, to take that trip, whereas right now, you would be draft restricted. Does that take us where you want to go?
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of all the different scenarios where, you know, if somebody within the bird section decided that we were unfairly assessing them for 100% of the impacts and not, and not including properties which would be benefiting not to people, but the properties that would be benefited by virtue of the opportunity for navigation access through the new cut. And whether or not the assumptions would be that now those people who have access through smugglers will no longer have smug, access to smugglers with those posts in, and therefore now being a benefit that they had, would have by going through the Alligator Creek. I'm not trying to say that is going to affect necessarily appropriateness of our assessment, but I would like to have that as some ammunition to go back to the state and say, look, you know, we want to maintain the same amount of access that currently exists in terms of usage at smugglers. And by putting in those posts, it might create issues for us from our assessment perspective, and therefore don't cut off the access with those posts. But if the concern is alerting people that it's shallow, alerting people that they should slow down, that is going to be less impactful with respect to our assessment, if you simply put up a sign. Anyway, I don't need an answer. I just, I just want you to maybe keep that in mind when you're negotiating with the state.
Sure, well, like I said, we're pretty much done with the state, we're gonna get our permit here shortly.
But if the permit, if the permit requires us to have those posts, and maybe we can get away with the sign instead, that's probably beneficial. And in order to support that argument, you can say that our assessment, our, our assumptions with respect to the establishment of the district, I'm fairly certain it was assuming that no change to the utilization of smugglers' cut was going to be required by state.
Well, I think that the majority of the use of smugglers' cut is for navigational access and not sightseeing. Now, I've heard obviously some anecdotal information about being used for sightseeing purposes, the councilperson here outlined that for us quite nicely. And there's advantages to that, but I think the majority of the use of that channel is for navigational access, so when you eliminate or you create a better navigational access with the new channel, the need for smugglers' cut for navigational access is basically extinguished. The only thing that remains for the need for smugglers' cut is for sightseeing benefits.
Well, are, are you assuming that, that the only people that are using smugglers' cut for?
Well, fishing as well, fishing is sightseeing.
I don't want my word in question, honestly, but it's, between, between the two of us, we've really put a lot of turbidity in.
Well, I, well, let me add to your turbidity. There's been some discussion, and I think Heather actually alluded to this in her report that she put out, which was, if you decided to do this as simply an across-the-board ad-vulgar tax that everybody in the community pays for, then what happens is, the people that live in this community are actually going to, in the long term, be paying more than somebody who lives east of US 41, because their property taxes are likely to almost de facto increase in value, because I no longer have to run all the way to Ponce Inlet. Hey, I'm selling my property, and they just put in this new channel, I can get another $50,000 for the value of my property when I sell it because of the new channel. And then that ad-vulgar taxation on the value of that property continues to go up. So they're actually paying that premium to an extent. So that takes us to the other end of the spectrum, and I think what Heather pointed out, which makes the most sense to me, is you just have to come up with what you believe to be a common sense assessment area, a common sense taxation methodology that everybody agrees to, and then you go forward with it.
And the test is not a unique or an exclusive special benefit. I mean, you're probably all aware of road assessments that are in a subdivision, and the properties within that subdivision are paying for 100% of the cost, but those are not gated roads. So we know that other traffic is allowed to drive on them, school buses go there. This is sort of similar. Now, if there are reasons to look at expanding the benefit area, I mean, I would need to work with Hans on that, and that's certainly something that could be examined, but it does not have to be a unique or an exclusive special benefit, it just has to be a reasonably related to the property.
And maybe you're two tiers, I mean.
And I looked at that, and we talked about that at the very early stages of this project, and whether that would make sense. I don't, you're always, however, even with that sort of an approach, you're still gonna have lines drawn.
Yeah.
You cannot get around that.
Right.
And maybe I can try draw a similar parallel, I was talking with Heather about this earlier, in terms of beach restoration projects. Okay? When we go through a special assessment for beach restoration projects, there's two components. There's a storm protection component, which is a direct benefit to the property, which is protected by that wider beach, the storm protection. The equivalent to that would be the property that's now getting better navigational access. And that's a direct benefit to the property from that improved navigational aspect. The other part of the beach restoration projects that we, that we go through has to do with recreational benefits. Who uses the beach? And we have an economist, Bill Strong, who actually goes out and does interviews and determines how much money those people that use the beach spend, whether they're out of town or local, and they actually come up with an assessment methodology that addresses recreational uses. Now, city council wanted to take that same approach, you could do the same type of, of query of the voters that are using the system and say, where are you coming from? What are you using the canals for? How often use smugglers' cut? What do you do when you're there? And go through that whole type of assessment methodology for recreational benefits, and then marry the two together as a final assessment. No, it's not new territory.
I think an economist or an appraiser to nail down your property values would be a logical next step.
I think that is very logical.
Because we can't leave the parties, it's gonna be benefiting the property, we can't leave that parameter.
But it's gonna keep the project moving.
Remember, this is our first foray into introducing the methodology. You're not required to adopt it today.
You know that?
So we have a lot of people who have left the city, and so they need to, you know, they need to weigh in on this methodology. They're not here, I don't know if they're checking their agendas when they're away. I go on vacation, last thing I want to do is check an agenda. So we introduced it. If you want us to take the next step as well and secure the services of an economist or a property appraiser, not a property appraiser, an appraiser, we can do that and bring back to you a contract with the costs, and you would again be fronting the costs and be paid back with an assessment. Is that something you would like us to do?
I think until.
That might not get you where you think you go, I think. I had to, I had, in a case I had where I was trying to establish, and this was when, you may recall years, years ago, the Corps of Engineers were moratorium on issuance of permits with docks. And of course, I was representing some property owners that wanted to have docks. And so, we went to a, a very well-qualified, very reputable, credible, private property appraiser to give me an estimate as to what the, what the, the reduction in fair market value would be by, as a result of the Corps of Engineers denying my client's ability to document. This is the answer that he told me, and I'm not a property appraiser, so I don't know if it was the correct answer or not, but that's what he would have testified on the standard, who would not document. He said that having a dock does not substantially affect the value of the property. What it does is affects the marketability of the property. Now, as a layman, I would think that's more in the same, that if it's not marketable, and you can't sell it, then you gotta reduce price with the bill. What they're saying is that it doesn't, it doesn't directly affect either with or without the dock, the value of the property units. And so, I would anticipate if, if that was the correct answer to me, that when we determine what the effect of having access to this cup would be or not access, I don't know that we're gonna get an, get an answer, so.
Listen, off the, on that note, if we could ask, on property appraisal, I mean, ask that because, you know, I'm just coming off here, I do think that we can assume that one end access, that literally the property would be worth more. But we, we probably have some appraiser that would be, you know, just, the opinion would be, even only in that way, of not being very.
I just don't think we're gonna get anything that's gonna help us, because I, just like we were saying, you, like, you could do a sliding scale, how do you determine?
You're still drawing lines.
And, and I, I don't think that a property appraiser is gonna be able to be that, that sophisticated in the way that they would calculate.
But, but in the state, I mean, because fees have to be based on the property, there has to be some method, it's not to this, we do this all throughout the state.
Right, 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 right. I'm, I'm just saying, again, looking at it from the standpoint of what we're doing here, and what we heard, people suggest that there are people outside of the district that are benefiting and not out of pay.
I mean, on that note, then maybe we can look at case law. It won't be the same as ours, but maybe similar in terms of, of marine environment, food as to marine environment possible, if that was necessary to keep that out of the question.
Because even on the property, on the description of a property, does it? Because even on the property, on the description of a property, doesn't it say saleable access? I mean, they do tag certain properties with certain attributes that have to do with their canal front.
Absolutely, and to a buyer that would be more marketable or more desirable than the value. And like I said, I would assume that if it's more marketable than the next, that would mean that it affects the value of the property. I'm, well, all I'm saying is that property appraisers don't make that same connection as I as a layman make. And so in order to save the city some money, it probably will be a worthless exercise to try and ask them to see what the difference in value of the property might be between whether, you know, how close you are to the access, whether you're outside of the district. I think we're better, it's better for us to kind of get a better understanding of the benefit to the property in general as opposed to the property value.
Can I weigh in here just for a second?
Sure.
Because I've defended numerous assessment programs throughout the state, and you do need an expert to put on the standard. If Hans is going to be the expert for that. But from a property value standpoint, traditionally, you might not, you don't get a traditional appraiser. It's going to be an economist who has experience with assessment programs. And they're going to look at not just pure dollars of property value, but they're going to look at some of the other intangibles and help refine the area that is going to, you know, either an increase or potential stabilization, preservation of property values. So, and marketability comes into that and other things as well. So I think we're saying the same thing. I'm not recommending necessarily a pure property appraiser who's going to go out and put a dollar on a value on a particular property, but an economist who has familiarity with assessment programs and preferably one who has been determined to be an expert by courts around the state before.
Because basically, our assumption on this here is time, travel time, is basically what we base this on. So, I mean, I think a two-tier, in my mind, may be something reasonable, but I would want more information. Would that be able, that person be able to give us that information? Whether a two-tier approach or just, you know, this is more discreet and?
That is definitely something that they, somebody with that skill set could look at, yes.
And then we have our expert. I think it's worth it to explore more information.
Recommend an economist who has specific experience of assessments and good work.
Yep.
We can secure the services of an economist, but now you want us to want that person to look beyond this? Look at PGI as a whole?
No.
No.
That's just me.
It would be.
I think that, what I'm hearing is, is Hans has made a recommendation. I'm sitting here on my tablet, looking at a Google map of PGI. And I'm sitting here staring at this, and I've been staring at this as we have been discussing this, to try to just look at it and imagine. And I think Hans made it a very reasonable assumption because I keep imagining, well, somebody who lives at one point, will they go north or will they go south? So it's a matter of validating that, or is there some other option that would answer that other question?
Well, like we said, we have to stay within the parameters of benefit to property. Benefit to people who don't.
And I'm going back to the benefits that were described here. And again, the ones that were, the ones that we were advised to look at is improved navigational access, water quality improvements, improved property values. So I'm looking at these and trying to determine, and trying to answer that question.
I think Hans could come up with, I mean, where you drew, where you started, where you drew the line down the middle before you went to the halfway point, where would that have been?
Well, we looked at it on this map. We actually looked at the access point, like channel marker number one out here for where you actually exited into Charlotte Harbor. And then we also used a channel marker down here off of Alligator Cut, the main entrance channel marker there. Those are the two exit points that we use as a basis. And that, from that, we developed the travel times and come up Alligator Creek and then all the way up through the canal system. And then drew those, where was the halfway point? And again, you're correct, absolutely correct. It's based on travel time. Is what that premise is that we came up with, where's the halfway point? Given that whoever lives on that halfway point, if you're closer to one entrance or the other, generally, you're going to take the shortest distance. Most people do. And you see, unless, you know, when there's a parking lot, you'd love, you'd love to be able to park right in front of Publix's front door, get out of your car and walk in if you could. Unless you're me, I like to park under a tree where it's nice and cool, my truck's cool, so I don't mind walking. And that's the kind of same thought process I had with the people that are voting here, is I've got to grind through canal system. I want to go fishing in Charlotte Harbor. I don't really want to go sightseeing. So I have to grind through this canal system to get out to where I can finally go voting. And literally, it was like almost an hour and 15 minutes for the furthest property you could get out Ponce Inlet, something like that. But yes, strictly, that's how they came up with that, was simply on travel time and where was the halfway point, and then worked it from there because I couldn't come up with any other way to, where do you start?
So that would be the area that I would like to see considered. What he just described.
That's the special assessment area.
Right.
The whole, the whole entire thing? No, we said from channel marker to channel marker.
Well, so you're talking about, well, if you do that, then you start getting into this question about, okay, well, is the person who lives up in this canal system up here? Okay, they're in a hurry to go fishing, so they go up Ponce. Okay, well, it's the vice mayor, and he wants to take people for a boat ride down through the canal system. So he comes all the way down through the canal system, and he decides it's a beautiful day in Charlotte Harbor. Let's go on out to Alligator Creek and back up the outside, and then we'll just go right back into Ponce Inlet, and it's a nice three-hour tour, and everybody's having a great time. So are you, that's, again, what Heather was trying to distinguish was that is a user, personal recreational thing that you're doing. It's not a navigational aspect that applies to a broader group.
For lack of a better term.
Yes, benefit to the person.
Yes.
Versus the property in terms of the value of the property.
So as a stat, can we bring back to you a proposal to hire an economist through a process that will study the benefited area?
Not right now, no, we're in a council discussion.
Maybe because all of this really is going to determine the benefit area to be honest.
Well, it's going to determine, back up, validate the property value.
Yes.
We need to get moving, so we will go through a process of selecting an economist and bringing that to you. And we'll decide yea or nay if you want to let it out.
Yeah.
Yep. There's people that do that. So we've been told. Did we get somewhere?
You got some.
Okay. I know. Okay. Next, we have discussion regarding PACE, P-A-C-E, financing for properties located within the city limits.
We want this back as an option for property owners. You asked us to take a look at the tax collector. The experience from unincorporated Charlotte County has been positive. The tax collector has no issues with those few properties. The question that's posed for you today is, do you want us to put together the agenda item for allowing certified PACE managers, certified through the state, operate within the city of Punta Corda, and it would be all voluntary on the property owners where they want to take advantage of the program? We would, we could produce a future agenda item, or you would doctor the proper, think of work or whatever, to allow this to happen? Or do we just want to not allow it?
Can we do it such that everybody's under, like, if they're a provider from the state, we say that's okay, or do we have to do it with each individual provider?
We have to allow certain providers to property.
Do we have to do a resolution for each one? I mean, is it a lot of staff time? That's what I'm asking. Is it a lot of work for?
Put the agenda item down.
And what do we have to look up? Resolution or with each one provider?
The program is just a state program.
I'm trying to remember.
The program is a state program, so those people who bought by court, bought by court. It really would be a proven use.
Of the state program, okay.
I'm trying to remember, can I do that by resolution or by law?
I'll have to tell you, but either or, we'll do it. Either or, it's, that's what we do. If you want to.
If we tell you to.
That's correct. Question, do you want to allow PACE to be an option for property owners in the city as it is in unincorporation?
Let him.
I had the opportunity to meet with Vicki Potts about this two days ago. I was, I had a lot of questions about the program because there were some pretty loose ends from the last meeting that we had. And I guess the bottom line is for me, I think it's going to be a beneficial program to approve for us to move forward with for the city because number one, it releases the city from any liability if we do implement it. The county, by the way, only has three properties in the entire county that are in this program. And she didn't even know what the project was that the homeowners actually did for those loans. So the idea being that they have, I guess it was a resolution, I forget what I read in the package now, but I guess they implemented a resolution and they interviewed certain vendors that they approved. And we could actually mirror that because those are already pre-approved by the county, and we could then just be a mirror image of what they have already approved in the county. But the good, the benefit for this is that the vendors that are in the program virtually guarantee that the project will get completed when you hire one of those contractors that works under their jurisdiction, so to speak. Because they are all in this program that they guarantee the work to be done, and that's a benefit. Versus if somebody, my question was, what would be the benefit to the city if we approve it? And why would somebody do this versus an equity loan or a second mortgage? And she said, well, the good news is if the people take this program and this way of funding, they don't have to pay it back immediately. They can pay it back over a period of years. But most importantly, the vendors that are approved for the program to be used for different, whether it's solar panels or whether it's any other project that you want to do for your house, hurricane windows or whatever. She said that the good news is that those projects will virtually be guaranteed to be performed and performed at a service level that everybody can accept. So that was the benefit to it.
And that was, I think, my conclusion as well, that if there are people here who can afford to go with air conditioning, but some people that are vulnerable don't, may get taken. And so it was my conclusion that the vendors themselves, as we heard at the last meeting, they actually ensure that the project is going to get completed and so that it will be done by reliable vendors that have done well, so.
I like that there's a level of oversight that you wouldn't have if you hired a private contractor on your own and did an equity loan.
So I guess my question is, what kind of staff time is this going to be required of the city? Is it just these agreements that we enter into with each company? Is that the way it works?
Yes.
Okay. Those are pretty standard.
Yeah, it's literally taking, well, in this case.
Could you say your name, sir?
I'm sorry. Terry Stark, I work for Wide Green Energy Fund. We're one of the PACE providers. It's literally, in this case, taking Charlotte County's docs, putting Punta Corda in there. And you could use the same exact set of docs. That way, our program matches theirs.
And it's basically all based on the state statute and from a provider by the state?
Correct.
So that doesn't sound, how many providers are there?
Just four.
So that seems reasonable.
And we always recommend, and we know you're going to do this, is to approve more than one. That way, your constituents have options, plus it drives down rates.
I like it also because it gives our business people opportunity to like sell panels, sell, you know, air conditions. Normally, they wouldn't be able to.
I have a question. What, other than solar panels and maybe impact resistant windows that are more energy efficient, what other types of projects would be included in these types of funding?
HVAC is included, insulation is included, reflective coating, paint that you can put on the outside of your house. Lighting is included, literally anything that will drive down your utility cost, if you want to look at it that way. Or is it renewable, and if you're, again, like solar panels?
Kind of like when we did the, we did the performance contract here at the city, kind of basically those same exact energy efficiency improvements.
And if I may, there have been more than three projects done in Charlotte County. But those, that information doesn't go to the tax collector until basically the end of May.
Okay.
And so I know our company has already had 22 projects completed, and we have another 16 in progress. So it has been very popular.
That's being corrected.
But I will tell you, all of that has been around, 47% of that is around hurricane wind hardening. And roofing and HVAC are the three that make up the vast majority of the projects. So it really is people taking care of their home and trying to get it done, quite frankly, in preparation for the rainy season.
Let's let him introduce himself, sort of, in an effort to be fair here.
No worries. Good afternoon, Captain, Commissioner, and the mayor. The best normal, and with Reading Financial, we are another provider. So actually, when we say provider, each of us are the third-party administrator for it in a local authority or a special district, if you want to call that. There's four of them in state. And each of us has an exclusive agreement with those different statewide-enabled authorities. Just to echo some of the comments you made about getting the work done, it truly is a differentiator because not only is it the work, it's a pre-qualified list of products and services with terms that we can, maximum terms we can finance based on useful life, third-party accreditations on this is a high-performance product. When it comes to insurance, we ask people to look to make sure that if it's a roof, a gable embrace and whatever, they can get the discount for it. That requires a bit more investigation. I think we're doing a lot more work now to figure out what those benefits are, depending on where you live. And then, you know, each of us is, we're differentiated a bit in our offering, so it's good to have a multi-provided competition. I believe Charlotte County's already done the legal review of the agreements, but, you know, you're joining an interlocal authority made up of other governments, and that's what you got to review. And then that authority then works with us to keep us accountable as providers. So you'll have an ability to be on a board if you want, depending on the type of authority it is. Any other questions, happy to answer those. I think we have submitted the three projects in a report to Charlotte County, to Dave in the Economic Development Office. But we do regular reporting back to you, so you'll know before it gets on the tax roll that a project is underway.
Just a really quick question while you're standing, I'll ask you. The other gentleman said that the disclosure of the seller to the buyer of the special assessment, how is that accomplished?
I mean, it's part of the process that disclosure is. First of all, it would, we would expect it to show up on the property appraiser site quite likely. But, I mean, the process is that it should be disclosed to the buyer before, like, you close and the title probably tells you there's a lien here. It should be something that happens prior to that.
So it's recorded and presumably, if not a separate disclosure, they have to do a title search. And if they don't do a title search, they won't be told by the seller.
Or, you know, once you submit it, it will be a line item on, that you can view publicly. It depends on how your property appraiser, if that's on the public site. Then you'll see actually our company name with an 800 number. And I believe the other gentleman, Mike from the other company, told you that they have a real estate services that they will actually contact the homeowner, and that number is the number you call for us to find out what's going on.
Yes, I was trying to find out if there's some other disclosure that was in the public records.
No, not to my knowledge, yes. Do you have any comments on that?
Yes.
I have one more question. Are the, are the loans tax deductible since they go on the tax bill?
We say, the vice is to check with your accountant, what is tax deductible, so we don't try to. In other words, we give you a payment. So we don't try to, in other words, we give you a payment, if you get HVAC done at $10,000 with the ductwork and everything else, we're going to give you a straightforward analysis of what you owe every year for 10 years, but not try to, you know, I mean, there may be a tax credit that comes through or a deduction that's possible, but, you know.
So if you see that on a trim notice, how would you know the length of the term that's left? You'd have to call the company? Like, if, like, I'm going to buy this house and I see your company name, and then I say, okay, well, what is that and how long is it going to be on there? I have to call you to find that out?
Yeah, at this point, I mean, I think, I haven't...
Yeah.
And then the lien, the lien gets treated every year down?
Yes.
Okay.
And never can be accelerated in any kind of foreclosure. It's just what, just like any other non-agreement assessment, it'd be the same way.
Okay.
So can we move forward with the prepared minutes?
Yes, yes.
You will not see this until Micaela gets back.
Okay.
Sure. She'll be back today after a wild day. This will be one of the projects you will prepare for the city's review. But if we can do it, let's do it with your assistance.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, new business, discussion regarding traffic calming options for West Reta Esplanade between Shreve and Cross Street, US 41 Southbound.
Again, for the record, Mitchell Austin, urban design. Several months ago, we were asked by city council to look at West Reta Esplanade in regards to traffic conditions. So this presentation relates to that. We looked at West Reta Esplanade, it is, of course, one street, it runs from US 41 Southbound Cross Street to a cul-de-sac that is the tidal canal just before you get to Fisherman's Village property. Really has three use zones from a planning perspective. There's an area from Shreve Street West that is cul-de-sac, so that is an area where there is not much traffic other than...
The people that realize they can't get to Fisherman's Village, that?
Correct.
Okay, and the sides.
Yes, correct, correct. That is, that is the, you missed your turn zone and access for a couple of properties. On the far western edge, you have basically the edge of downtown. You have two blocks, the block that we're sitting on with institutional and commercial uses, and the block to the north along the harbor, which of course contains hotel and restaurant bar. Within the middle, the most substantial portion of Reta Esplanade, you have an area that is really about neighborhood and park access. So this is an area where we're looking to access homes and access the park. And that, I think, is the primary area of concern in regards to traffic. And again, those traffic concerns, as voiced at city council, were in regards to traffic speed, traffic volume, and preserving or enhancing safety for all the roadway users when they're driving, walking, or bicycle. So in the current configuration, Reta Esplanade is a two-lane street, bounded on the south by private property, on the north by Gilcrest Park. You have the two travel lanes, a five-foot wide sidewalk, and some street trees. In terms of its existing traffic calming features, other than the street trees, you only have two regulatory features, and that's a 30 mile an hour posted speed limit and an ordinance prohibiting through trucks, which is usually signed or written. There are no other traffic calming features, there's nothing in the built environment that tells you that this is a 30 mile an hour road. If you imagine where the houses are, that those are orange groves, and you imagine Gilcrest Park as a cow pasture, this could be County Road 74 in East County by its actual roadway features. Reta Esplanade is undergoing changes related to Harbor Walk. The proposed configuration, based on the Harbor Walk project in Gilcrest Park, will be, again, to the south, five-foot wide sidewalk, planting strip, the two vehicular travel lanes, angle parking, and an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the northern side, which sort of straddles the line between the right of way and Gilcrest Park. So in these terms, the traffic calming features are really the wider sidewalk along Gilcrest Park. There are included in this project paved intersections and crosswalk treatments, which, again, add some traffic calming value. The biggest traffic calming effect on the roadway that we're adding as, as part of the Harbor Walk project is on-street parking. Parking on the street alerts drivers to the potential of conflicts as people enter and exit those parking spaces. If you're among the 85% of reasonable drivers, you're going to slow down, you're going to lay off the accelerator, you're going to coast, you're going to hover over the brake because you're concerned about the potential for collisions. Moving into the future, if we look at our planning documents, by resolution, city council has adopted a list of future streets to be bricked. And those do include two sections of West Reta Esplanade, and those are from Shreve to Dolly on the far western end and from Cross Street to Durance on the eastern end. So those, as we know, brick streets calm traffic. It's kind of uncomfortable to drive 45 miles an hour on a street that's been bricked. As part of city council's direction, staff looked at a potential one-way configuration for this street. And in looking at that, go back to our use zones, in the cul-de-sac area, definitely need to have two-way traffic unless we're going to convert this property into a used car lot. And on the western, on the eastern end, on the downtown edge, we need to preserve two-way traffic so that we can provide the access required for the existing business and institutional uses in that section. So really, in terms of a one-way potential, we're only looking at the section between Shreve and Harvey Street, where, again, we're providing neighborhood and park access. So if we look at a potential one-way configuration, we would have, again, we know we're putting in the angle parking, the angle parking is against Gilcrest Park. We know we have two-lane configurations on either end of this one-way configuration. So the most logical way to make this happen is for the one-way directionality to be westbound towards Fisherman's Village or towards Shreve Street. And then that leaves the question, what do you do with the remaining 10 or so feet of paved surface? You could, in terms of preserving the emergency vehicle access, continue to preserve that as asphalt area and install what's called a cycle track, which is a two-way bike lane. So that would enable that land to be, that asphalt to be used for emergency vehicle access, but under daily operations, that asphalt would have some use to the public. So in the one-way configuration, the traffic calming features will still include all of the features associated with Harbor Walk project, the wider sidewalk, the paved intersection and crosswalk treatments, and the on-street parking. What you would be adding is one lane, preferably brick paved, and then the cycle track, which would prohibit passing, would limit vehicles in the other direction, etc. City staff did make a firm recommendation here. We feel that the one-way configuration, if you look on a network basis, we have one one-way pair headed east and west. Typically, in a gridded street system where you have downtown Atlanta, downtown Tampa, downtown Seattle, Denver, you would have a system of one-way pairs. So you would alternate every other travel, every other roadway in any particular direction when people are in the opposite direction. This will break that pattern because you would have two immediately adjacent facilities that would be headed westbound, Reta, and then Marion Avenue. So that's, from a network perspective, probably not the best solution. We do definitely recommend, since traffic calming was the underlying basis for this project, this analysis is to proceed with Harbor Walk Area 1, 2, and 3 as designed, providing the on-street parking, the paved crosswalks and intersections. And then, once those projects are complete, we would, again, evaluate the traffic conditions and see if further action was needed. If further traffic calming is desired at that point, then the staff recommendation would be to accelerate the brick street projects that are planned by resolution for this roadway, and then reevaluate traffic conditions to see if additional action was warranted.
I think we need to drop the speed because when we get the on-street parking, the people backing out, we're definitely going to need to drop the speed. But it's...
As a staff, we are not recommending a one-way path. That was the initial, that was the initial order.
I guess new road.
Yeah. I'm not recommending that, but we need to slow.
I'm the one that brought out that idea, and I'm not recommending. I was there, I moved out.
You sent Mitchell down to cul-de-sac.
But the community, as long as we're going down, I mean, really, the idea was just to calm that down.
We need to learn. Could I suggest that we teach Gary how to raise his hand to the cul-de-sac?
Nancy?
Thank you. I think Kim Devine was the one who actually was recommending this quite some time ago, but from a new urbanism standpoint, we would not recommend one-way at all. In fact, in Delray Beach, Jaime Correa recommended conversion of their one-way streets to two-way, and they did. And it worked out much better. And I would, if we could, I would even recommend that we change Olympia and Marion, but we can't because of the state highway. So I think that makes the most sense. One of the questions I have is that since we're adding all of the parking along the north side, or the, yeah, the north side of Reta, is it possible that in some future point, that we would want to consider adding curbing along the south side in front of the homes so that it would restrict that, so we don't end up with people parking on the, is that, would that add to...
Some of the people that live there.
They don't have access.
What?
Some of the people there don't have a driveway.
I'm not saying that you would, there's going to be parking across the street.
But it also may affect drainage, I personally would leave that alone for a moment.
Well, I was just wondering if it would have any impact on the slowing people down if there was that versus not?
Certainly in regards to the conditions on the south side of the right of way and on the, on the neighborhood side, as Howard indicated, there are a number of homes that don't have driveways, don't have any other vehicular access other than parking on the street. You take a look at that and evaluate potential parallel parking facilities. Again, you're adding on-street parking to both sides of the roadway at that point, and you could see further traffic calming based on that. In terms of adding the curb itself, doesn't really net you a traffic calming effect unless you're narrowing, physically narrowing the roadway facility. But for this facility configuration with the diagonal parking, the angle parking, you definitely want to maintain that two-plus foot wide cross section.
I definitely think we should revisit this when we get closer to being done with the park.
In terms of vehicular speed?
And more calming measures.
Yeah, more calming measures. I don't know if the speed, the place to look at once it's all done.
Mm-hmm.
That one's a good start. Okay.
Thank you.
We take this up with our action.
Turn the page. City manager.
No, we're trying to do a better job spacing out items for the agenda, we're trying.
If I had given them all, that would help.
Nothing further? City clerk.
Yes, the first item is the General Employees Pension Board Fifth Member Appointment. The General Employees Pension Board is made up of five members. Two are elected by the membership, two are appointed by city council, and then the fifth member trustee is appointed by the board but is confirmed by city council. And they have taken the action to reappoint Mr. Ravi Teets. And today, we're just asking you to confirm that.
So we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve? We have a motion second to approve Mr. Teets. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie, unanimous.
Thank you. I'll go through the vacancies very quickly. We have two unexpired terms on the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's one regular seat and one alternate there. For the total, we have three vacancies. We have two regular seats and one alternate, but I will tell you that one of the regular seats, the member is eligible for reappointment and has already expressed his interest in being nominated for reappointment. So that vacancy shouldn't last too long. I'm not sure about the other two, we haven't been able to get any new applicants for the building board. And then finally, we have the vacancy on the Puntagorda Housing Authority for their resident commissioner, and I have not heard any more from the executive director, but we'll, we'll contact her again and see if we have any applicants. And moving on to nominations, then, we have an unexpired term as an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals with one eligible applicant. If you would like to nominate and appoint, you may use a motion, nominate and appoint.
We have a motion and a second to nominate and appoint Mr. Franklin Ford. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie unanimous.
Okay, the last thing we have is an appointment. This is for the Puntagorda Housing Authority. We have two vacancies, these are the regular seats, we have four applicants.
Carrie, the building board, you do not have to live in the city limits to be on that?
That's correct, but we do have limitations, some of them. We have a balance between contractors and consumer advocates, so we have to maintain that balance.
Do you know what the position is? I mean...
All right, any appointments are Ms. Booth and Mr. Long.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Under policy and legislation, I don't have anything. So we'll do council member comments. Nancy?
I already mentioned to you that, expressed our feelings to the NPO about the Gilcrest Park situation. And I did express our... Park situation, and I did express our concern to the airport authority, and working with them, getting mixed reviews, mixed comments on understanding of citizen comments, so it's going to take a while, but it'll be a working process.
Our lien isn't handled?
No.
No.
Yes, I, yes, I've mentioned it, and it seems as though some of the reaction is, well, people, people should know there's an airport. It's like, that's not the point. So, I have work to do.
Gary?
I have no further comment this time. I think I've upset it.
Lynn?
I'll just let you know, yesterday at Cooper Creek, very big day, there was the people from, from Centennial Bank and Timbity and the group group on the border of the county had a big, it was Taco Tuesday.
Oh.
And so they had a whole kind of Mexican themed thing to pick out, and so a lot of the people there, it was really, really big day, so went very well.
Excellent. Citizens comments, any topic? Podium, state your name, you have three minutes.
Karen Turnbull, I know I'm not winning any points by making people stay even longer, so I'll be quick. A couple comments about benefits regarding the assessment methodology. First, I would like to thank the vice mayor for acknowledging that everyone in PGI will benefit from the new access. I'm not, did you decide to get an economist to, okay, is that economist only going to appraise the properties in the, in the bird section, all of them?
This is just citizens' comments, it's not a question.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, I think that, that appraisals of value being raised in the bird section without appraisals of what value might be raised in the rest of PGI would not mean much. I think that any property in PGI, when up for sale, they're going to state that they live in a community where there are two exits to the harbor. All the properties are going to state that, not just the ones in the bird section. Also, I believe if properties in the bird section do go up, properties everywhere else in PGI will go up. The other thing is, you know, we're talking about a very, quite a large assessment on a small group of people for something that will benefit many people. The, the chunk of people that have been picked to pay this is basically based on two assumptions. One assumption that everybody's going to pick the shortest way out by boat, and the second assumption that the property value will be higher. And both of those assumptions, even based on conversation today, are very, very shaky. And there are many, many other reasons. Other people will use the, the new access besides just the bird people, and again, you know, if the property value in one area is going to go up, how do we know that where that line is, the property value across the street won't go up either? So again, I'm requesting that you reject a policy that will pick one small area to finance the entire cost of this new outlet, which I believe, as many others believe, including people that don't live in the bird section, will benefit the entire community. Thank you.
Jean Lowsky, West End Drive, and I am a property owner, but I have no waterfront property, but I see a benefit to it, and I can see the canal from my windows. Addressing Gary and David's concerns about cost sharing, in my experience with working with some other cities in the Midwest largely, there is a possibility of you addressing it in this manner. The cost of eight to 13% of the total cost, and really, folks, when you divide it up among the number of properties and all of that, and the city as a whole, this is a small amount of money. We're talking one and a half to $2 million, maybe 2.5 after it's all said and done. When you get that down to a basis, Hans and the other costs that are involved in this are from eight to 13%. That's what standard architectural fees are. And if we addressed it on that basis and said the architectural or design fees plus all the application fees and so forth that are involved in the project will be borne by the city as a whole. The actual construction costs of the digging of the canal will be borne by the people in the bird section by whichever method you, you choose, whether it's by the number of docks or slips, or by the linear footage of sea wall. Those can be handled that way, but let's share that cost, and that means me not having a waterfront property, and like Gary, I'm willing to pay for the other people, okay? It really comes down to me being maybe $15 or $20 on my tax bill for a couple of years. It's not much money at all. And we're arguing and nitpicking over a really small thing that has a huge benefit for the community. So I would urge that the city pick up the cost of the design aspects, the permitting aspects, and let the bird section pay for the actual construction. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Don McCormick, it seemed like a good idea with Bill Gunther being recognized this morning, and with the president of the PGI Civic Association being a graduate of the class, that, that as part of citizens' comments, I would want to introduce a discussion regarding our experience with looking at surveillance equipment and the efficacy of undertaking a surveillance program, but this is not the time or the place to do it. I guess this is a request to, to be put on the agenda for a more time certain than waiting for citizens' comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good afternoon, Harton, Dover. Two comments, please. As a board member of the Do the Right Thing program of Charlotte County, there was tremendous turnout and support for the Public Safety Appreciation Night last Saturday night, and Saturday night a week ago. And as a result of that, the Do the Right Thing program was one of the two beneficiaries of that program and the attendance. And I'm grateful to say that Do the Right Thing program was awarded $15,000 as a result of that, and it's to the benefit of the entire county and I just Ponegora, and it's tremendous program. And I thank the mayor for representing the city council and the city of that program. And I think there were close to 500 or 600 attendees there, and it was, the recognition was terrific. Secondly, I'm not waiting. I spent many hours at the block party this past weekend, and we worked information booth, which we usually do every year, and we worked it for three hours on Saturday afternoon. The turnout, the response of people, response of the people there, was just tremendous. I mean, people were so appreciative and glad that the block party had been re-initiated. It was a tremendous crowd, a very civil crowd, okay? Public safety, I said they really didn't have any issues, and the entertainment was tremendous. The city did a sensational job of the public safety and sanitation afterwards. The next day, you wouldn't even recognize there were tens of thousands of people there, and I think that's probably a pretty accurate number. We stayed to the very end at 10 o'clock, and there was a huge crowd of people there that stayed until then as well at the last, last entertainment. I think the businesses did okay with that. I don't know that there's many serious business interruptions. I know Copperfish Books did something very interesting and created a book fair on Saturday morning and drew a large, a large number of people for that. So I think, I think by many measures, the block party was a success, and there's a lot of hope and anticipation that will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any comments? Seeing none, we are turned.